Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills, and there are a total of six. The first one is 23-012R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 License for Use at 1,000 West Lombard Street, 21223. 23-0192R, thank you. And the second bill is 23-0454, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 1022 West Landville Street. The third bill is 230469, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1014 Edmondson Avenue. The fourth bill is 240497, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1005 West Landville Street. The fifth bill is 24-0515, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 223 South Stricker Street. And the last bill, 23-0506, Managing... 24-0506, Managed Natural Landscapes. In attendance today, we have members of the committee, Mark Conway of the Fourth District, Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District, and Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. And Mr. Bullock, John Bullock of the Ninth District. You're welcome, John. And Representatives from the Office of the President, we have Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director of Legislation. And from the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis, Director of Government Relations. So let's begin. Bill Number 23-0192R, Approval for Exchange of a Class BD7 License to a Class A7 License for the Use at 1,000 West Lombard Street, 21223. This bill was introduced on October 2, 2023. Sponsor, Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Bullock, you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill, along with the others, has gotten community input and support, and so we're moving forward with that understanding and appreciate the consideration of the committee. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving to Agency Reports, we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, and we would approve the bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. The Board of Liquor License and Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michelle Wertzberg. I'm the Deputy Executive Secretary for the Liquor Board, and we have no position on this bill. We have no objection.
Thank you. Baltimore City Police Department.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs for Baltimore Police Department, and we have no objection to the change.
Thank you. Health Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Nina Themelis with the Office of Government Relations, speaking on behalf of the Health Department, and they also have no objection to legislation.
Thank you. Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz with DOT. We have no concerns with the bill and defer to the Liquor Board.
Thank you. And I think that's all for Agencies. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Hearing none. We'll check for in-person testimony. And if you are online and wish to testify, hold tight for the hand raise button, and we will unmute you. But first, we're checking for any in-person on this bill, and there is no in-person testimony. And there's no online. That's okay. Okay, is there a motion to move this bill favorable? So moved by Dorsey, and second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock, is a yes. Conway, is a yes. Dorsey, is a yes. Glover, absent. Ramos, is a yes. Stokes, is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear Bill Number 23-0454, and that zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District, and that's 1022 West Landville Street. This bill was introduced on November 20 of 2023. Sponsor, Councilmember Bullock. Comments, Councilmember Bullock?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. This also has community support, and we're happy to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agency Reports, City Solicitor Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietro from the City Solicitor's Office. The Law Department approves this bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency.
Thank you. Housing Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Committee, Eric Tissot for the Department of Planning. They reviewed this bill in their public meeting on February 8. We note that the property did have prior use under HAVC's ownership for two units before it was conveyed to private hands, and then through vacancy, it was automatically reset to single-family dwelling status. Otherwise, we believe that it meets all the pertinent requirements, and Planning Commission recommended favorable.
Thank you for your favorable report. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nina Themelis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. On behalf of the BMZA, they defer to the Planning Department and Commission.
Thank you. Deferred for favorable report. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Wiley from BDC. We stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Favorable report. Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz, DOT has no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably? So moved by Stokes, second.
Second.
Second by Ramos. Middleton, yes. Bullock, yes. Conway, is a yes. Dorsey, is a yes. Glover, absent. Ramos, is a yes. And Stokes, is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, we have Bill Number 23-0469, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1014 Edmondson Avenue. And this bill was introduced on December 4, 2023, sponsored by Councilmember Bullock.
So again, thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, this is another bill that has a community support, and I appreciate a favorable vote from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agency Reports, City Solicitor's Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietro from the City Solicitor's Office. We approve this bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency.
Thank you. Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. The BMZA stands by its report and defers to the report of Planning Commission.
Thank you. Planning.
Good afternoon again. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their public meeting on March 28. This is a request for two units. The size of the building and the proposed units meet all of the requirements, but for the lot area requirement of a little over 9% lot area variance would be required, and I believe is included in the bill. They do have the ability to provide the one extra parking space in the rear yard, so they should be able to meet the parking with that Planning Commission recommended favorable.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Chief Ensign Officer, the Fire Marshal. The Fire Department doesn't have any opposition to Bill 23-0469.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. And Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DOT has no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee? Hearing none. There's no in-person testimony, and there's also no one online. Is there a motion to move this bill? So moved by Conway, second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock, is a yes. Conway, is a yes. Dorsey, is a yes. Glover, absent. Ramos, is a yes. And Stokes, is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear Bill Number 24-0497, which is another zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 1005 West Landville Street. And this bill was introduced on February 26, 2024. Comments from the sponsor?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Also want to note for the public as well that bills get submitted at different times, and we also have a long backlog, and so kudos to council staff, council services, as well as the chair in terms of getting these scheduled. Again, this is another bill that has gotten community support, and we look for a favorable disposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Agency Reports, starting with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, and we would approve the bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Good afternoon. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their public meeting on May 9. We note that the property meets all the bulk requirements and the unit size requirements. The only exception is that it cannot provide an additional parking space to serve the second unit. And the reason for that is the back of the property backs up to an inter-block park, and so it's a landlocked parcel, which is a hardship that they can't control, and makes it reasonable to grant that variance, which I believe is included in the bill. For that reason, Planning Commission recommended favorable.
Thank you. Thank you for that notification of the parking. Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Luciana Diaz. We have no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. The BMZA.
Good afternoon, Nina Themelis. Mayor's Office of Government Relations. On behalf of the BMZA, they defer to the recommendation report of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And BDC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Wiley from BDC. We stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. And lastly, the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
And I don't want to leave out the Fire Department.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Baltimore City Fire Department doesn't have any opposition to City Council Bill 24-0497.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Hearing none. There is no public testimony, and there is no online testimony. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second. Second by Bullock. Middleton, yes. Bullock, is a yes. Conway, is a yes. Dorsey, is a yes. Glover, absent. Ramos, is a yes. And Stokes, is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear Bill Number 24-0515, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance 223 South Stricker Street. This bill was introduced on February 26, 2024, and also sponsored by Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, community support for this bill, and appreciate favorable vote. Thank you.
Thank you. City Solicitor's Office, starting with Agency Reports.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietro again from the Law Department. We approve the bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency.
Thank you. Planning Commission.
Good afternoon again. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their public meeting on August 1 of this year. For this conversion, we note that a lot area variance of about 20.6 is required, which is incorporated into the bill, although the size of the internal gross square footage of the building and of each of the proposed units meets the requirement for size. So it's a big building on a relatively smaller lot. We also note that they're unable to provide the one parking space to serve the second unit because the rear of the property is only accessible by a pedestrian alley, so it has no vehicular access, which should be sufficient to meet the requirements for the variance for that. And with that, Planning Commission recommends favorable.
Thank you. Favorable report. And with that, the Fire Department. I see you shaking your head.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Baltimore City Fire Department doesn't have any objections to City Council Bill 24-0515.
Thank you. Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. DOT has no objection to the bill.
Thank you. Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nina Themelis. Mayor's Office of Government Relations. On behalf of the BMZA, they defer to the recommendation report of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. BDC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Wiley, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. And the Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions for this bill? Hearing none. There is no public testimony, and no online testimony. Is there a motion to move this bill favorable? So moved by Ramos, second. Second by Dorsey. Middleton, yes. Bullock, is a yes. Conway, is a yes. Dorsey, is a yes. Glover, absent. Ramos, is a yes. And Stokes, is a yes. This bill will move to the next council meeting. And lastly, Bill Number 24-0506, Managed Natural Landscapes, for the purpose of permitting certain plants and grasses to exceed eight inches in height under certain circumstances, requiring the promogular... Pronouncing that word wrong. Promogulation of certain regulations, defining certain terms, and generally related to managed natural landscapes. This bill was introduced on April 8, 2024, and the bill's sponsor is Councilmember Conway. Councilmember Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you...
Pronounce that word for me.
Promulgation.
Okay.
Promulgation.
Thank you.
I don't know what it means, so don't ask me that question. I'm kidding. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to have this hearing. This is an important bill that I think a lot of people don't appreciate. This is the first of actually two sister bills. I'll call them sisters. The other... This is on Managed Natural Landscapes, focused on native plant gardens throughout the city. And the second hearing will take place tomorrow in the Public Safety and Government Operations Meeting, and that's focused on urban meadows. The idea of the bill is that it would permit native plants and grasses to grow past eight inches. As folks may know, anything that grows over eight inches is considered high grass and weeds. However, we know that many of the native plants that would have grown in our city otherwise and really serve broader ecosystem benefits sometimes grow over eight inches, and that is actually healthy, whether it be flowers, or bushes, or other things like that, that we certainly would love to see, because it can help with stormwater, it could help with the heat island effect, it can help with water management. Native plants, they can grow on their own, and so you don't need to water them quite as much. And so when you begin to think about a lot of the benefits of planting native plants, it seems, I would say, a little strange that we'd have instances where we would find folks for planting native plants throughout the city. This is an issue that I have seen frequently in my district, as folks who've planted native plants in their gardens have been fined for those plants. The idea here is to make sure that, of course, these are still well-kept, hence the bill's name, Managed Natural Landscapes, and not overgrown or unsightly in a way that brings down the value of a neighborhood. But the idea here is to make sure that we're thinking about the habitats, the pollinators, and other benefits that native plants provide when we plant them throughout the city. So really looking forward to the conversation we have here today. It was helpful to read the feedback that the agencies have provided. I'm really interested in hearing some more, but I appreciate the opportunity to have the discussion, and I expect that we will have to have additional hearings to work out some amendments here. If it's okay, I'll just note one very brief one. In the bill, the bill allowed for native or non-native plants. In the original drafting, we just fixed that. This bill would specifically focus on native plants. Any non-native plants that are above eight inches would not qualify under this bill. So thank you, Madam Chair, and look forward to the rest of the discussion.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear the Agency Reports, and then we'll have comments and questions. We'll start with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office, we would approve the bill for Form and Legal Sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Committee, Stephanie Murdock for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We're very pleased to participate in this hearing today. We do stand by our unfavorable bill report. While we recognize that these plantings may provide benefits to the environment, including improved air quality and wildlife biodiversity, as well as another... a number of other reasons as expressed by the sponsor, we do have some concerns should the responsibility for enforcement fall upon DHCD. Our code enforcement inspectors are not currently trained, and they're not botanists, and they're not trained in this type of plant identification. Additionally, we don't have that very technical expertise to take on this body of work. I was able to sit in on the Robust Sustainability Commission meeting last night, and we are certainly excited to remain at the table and discuss this bill with the sponsor, as well as members of the committee, and also looking forward to hearing input from the Sustainability Commission and the work that may come from a future report. And we stand by to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
On that note of unfavorable, I'd like to go ahead and move to the Health Department.
Hi. Good afternoon, Council Vice President and members of the committee, Julia Roche, Legislative Affairs Director from Baltimore City Health Department. Unfortunately, we also are requesting an unfavorable report due to reasons outlined in our agency report, namely, capacity to enforce. We do recognize the benefits of the managed natural landscapes that are being proposed, so we're more than happy to participate in further discussions about how this might be achieved. And my colleague, Assistant Commissioner Jessica Speaker, is here behind me, who can speak to any questions you may have about our Environmental Health Bureau. Thank you so much.
Thank you. House, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I'm sorry about my voice being a little on the web.
Understood.
This is Alejandra Ivanovich, representing the Department of Public Works. We respectfully defer to the Department of Housing and Community Development. We do have one suggestion on the bill, but respectfully defer to the DHCD.
Okay. Did you want to share the suggestion?
Basically, what we wanted to sort of recommend is that you reconsider the definition of rain gardens. That's all.
Definition.
Yeah.
Department of Recreation and Parks.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Committee, Nina Themelis from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, on behalf of Recreation and Parks. I do want to note that the Department defers to the Office of Sustainability as legislation is not within their purview, but I believe there was a referral error, so I don't believe we have a report from the Office of Sustainability on hand at this time, but they should be working to develop one and submit one at this time.
Okay. Thank you for that. So they'll be submitting... Office of Sustainability will be submitting a late referral. Okay. Because we're... TV, the cable is down, and we don't know how long. So we'll just have a three-minute recess. Okay, I think we can get back in session. This is being recorded. It's the cable that's down, but we can still hold the hearing because it is being recorded, and we still have our livestream. So getting back to Agency Reports, Department of Finance.
Gabriel Stuart Zeikowitz, here with the Department of Finance. We stand by our report of does not oppose, and our... We stand by our report of does not oppose, and are here to discuss and contribute as needed.
Thank you. Housing Authority?
Good afternoon, Nina Themmler, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. A representative from HABC couldn't be here this afternoon, but they do not oppose, and I believe they support the legislation, as there is nothing included within legislation that would negatively impact their operations. Thank you.
Okay. And then I had mentioned that the Office of Sustainability will be turning a late referral. Do committee members have any comments or questions at this particular time?
You know I do.
And we'll go with Councilman Dorsey first.
Thank you. Now, I think I know what, and probably have, in my managed natural landscape in my yard. I could identify native or non-native grasses, wildflowers, ferns, shrubs, or trees, including rain gardens, meadow vegetation, and ornamental plants. But what in the world is a FORB?
Can you repeat that?
What in the world is a FORB?
A FORB?
Forbes.
Forbes?
Yeah. Managed natural landscape means a planned, intentional, and maintained planting of native or non-native grasses, wildflowers, Forbes.
So, when I was pulling together the bill, we had it actually quite simple. I don't know what a FORB is either. I would Google it just the same way you would. Nevertheless, I had some people that work in this space look at the context of the bill to think about what makes sense to include and what should be allowed. And I think they want it to be as permissive as possible to native plants, regardless of the sort of bucket they fit in.
I just wanted to ask and see if you could give a definition.
No, I have nothing for you. I'm sorry.
A FORB, or FORB spelled with a P-H, for those interested, is an herbaceous flowering plant that is not a graminoid.
Not a what?
Graminoid. For those in the know, not a graminoid.
Was that your only question?
Well, that was my first. I didn't know.
That was a burning question.
My, my real question is, I got shrubs. I got plants that are more than four inches tall. I got hostas, I got beauty berry bush, I got all kinds of stuff in my yard. I got lots of native flowering plants and grasses. Most of the time, I'm not getting a citation. I've never gotten a citation, but I had some constituents who've gotten citations, and I think kind of what generally happens is, they complain, and they say, "Look, I've got a native pollinator garden in my front yard." You know, I've had these conversations with housing inspectors before, or their supervisors, and they're kind of like, "Yeah, we don't want to cite you for those kind of things." And I've talked to the ECB, and the ECB, you know, lets it go, whatever. They abate the violation. Is that the problem we're trying to solve here?
Yes. So, I've had a number of constituents who have been fined for having native plants that are maintained and managed, but technically were over the eight-inch limit, and therefore technically broke the law. And they were fined. And they continue to be fined. And so I think that, that's not really the spirit of the law, is I think what you're suggesting as well. I've got shrubs, I've got hostas. Don't fine me, DHCD.
I have grass that's over eight inches tall.
Yeah. I do too. And I think, for the most part, you know, I think we do have a good sense of what is allowable. I think we want to, we want to be thoughtful about stopping folks from planting native plants, knowing the benefits that they have, and knowing that we kind of allow it as long as it's neat already. We don't really get in the way of that. So, I think that's the intention of the bill. The broad overall intention is noting all the additional ecosystem benefits. I mean, if you think about birds, birds need things to eat, those things that need things to eat, they need native plants. If those native plants are not available, there's nothing that brings to birds. I had a conversation just this last weekend about how someone in a different part of the city sees no Orioles. And that's a shame, because they just need to turn on the TV, but, that was a joke. But also, you know, these are the things that contribute to that. These are ecosystem considerations, and we know that not only do native plants help the ecosystem, they are also much easier to manage because they are made for this climate. When you get something that may be shorter and technically meets the eight-inch standard, but is non-native, that doesn't help us. And it doesn't help the ecosystem, and it may look good, but it doesn't actually function in a way that's helpful.
A couple of other thoughts here. One is, I've also said a couple of times over the last couple of years, I've never actually seen an Oriole, like, in life, in the wild. Never seen one. I got lots of robins that can easily be mistaken for Orioles, but no, I've never seen an Oriole anywhere in my life in Baltimore City. And I've commented on this a number of times. Maybe this would help with that. I'd love that. I plant lots of native plants. And look, garden cultivation is a centuries-old practice. You know, I certainly wouldn't want to be in a position of saying, "Look, tulips come from the Netherlands." Like, we're not allowing tulips anymore, right? Like, I don't want to be saying that we shouldn't allow, and like, I hate butterfly bush. Everybody loves butterfly bush, but it actually is not, is very, very bad, actually, in ways. There are a lot of things that are very commonly planted, and people cultivate in their yards because they like the way that they look, but they are non-native. And as much misgiving as I have about this, most of them, you know, I probably wouldn't want to say, "You can't do this anymore," and get in the way of that. And that seems to be at the heart of what the Housing Department's concern is, is the ability to identify plants is not something that your, you know, average housing inspector is adept at. It's, I can see what I see when I know what a vacant house looks like, and the yard is completely overgrown and completely unkempt. And I, you know, I can't tell you what porn is, but I know it when I see it, right? I know what a managed landscape looks like when I see it. It's fairly easily identifiable. If we were only to focus on the well-managed aspect of this, is there a way to thread that needle of like, "I am able to determine what is well-managed versus what is not well-managed"? Is that something that's easily identifiable or in some articulable way?
It's certainly something, Stephanie Murdock with Baltimore City DHCD, it's certainly something that we can think about. Right now, we do have the height requirements in our code of four inches along sidewalks, gutters, and alleys, and eight inches for the rest of the property. So, we do need to be very thoughtful when we're considering this topic, the "I know it when I see it" kind of thing. It can be tricky. There are many people who do have grass and plants over eight inches that may not be getting called in, or citations, or notices, because they are managed in such a way, but when the neighbor then calls 311 to report something, it's up to our inspectors to go out and use our code to determine if a violation has occurred. And if it has occurred, there are opportunities to cure that violation, as some of my colleagues discussed earlier, around going to the ECB and working with the housing inspector. So, it's certainly something we'd want to continue the conversation on. Just for full disclosure, I am actually a Maryland master naturalist, and right here is the book for the training that I took independently of DHCD, just to learn the program. And if you took me out to any backyard right now, I would be very hard-pressed to identify the type and species of all of the different plants that I may come across. So, it's certainly something that we're willing to work with the sponsor and the Sustainability Commission on, but right now, with the capacity of our organization and the training and the folks that we hire for, we are not able to do what is outlined in the bill.
So, I understand the enforcement piece. Because we're such a city with many different kinds of neighborhoods, and our goal is to try to treat everyone equally, especially when it comes to fines. So, it, to me, it's going to be interesting in how that enforcement is going to take place. We just heard from a council member where he's never seen an Oriole bird, and I see them all the time where I live. So, it's like, that's the same way with, I guess, different kinds of grass and vegetation grows different ways in different communities because of whether it's the tree-lined community or a community that, you know, is just total sun and no trees or, you know, things at all. It's just dead grass. So, it'd be interesting to see how we're going to go about that enforcement. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I want to, because I had a chance to, of course, read the reports, and I appreciate DHCD and health. I think it's an excellent question to pose, whether or not we have the expertise in-house to identify a native plant. I would say, to the councilman's point, to Councilman Dorsey's point, if we focus more so on the managed natural landscape piece, you can tell when someone is taking care of their yard, even if it's growing wild, and it looks wild. You can tell if someone's managing it. That would be the first indicator of whether or not you need to intervene. And I would suggest, that's how we do it today anyway, for the simple fact that I have not, "Don't fine me." But I haven't been fined, and the councilman hasn't been fined. And so, I think, you know, there are many instances in which folks have grasses or otherwise that are beyond the eight-inch threshold that actually look quite nice and actually bring value to a neighborhood. And I would suggest that they bring that much more value when it's a native plant that can help add additional ecosystem benefits, that can bring more Orioles around the city. So, I, while I do appreciate the sort of confusion, I would love to work with you guys to think about how we resolve that confusion. I think the managed natural landscape, aside from the native plants piece, is a really powerful point of discernment for our inspectors to think about. When you go out there and you look at a property, does it look like someone is actually taking care of that property? We're not talking about vacant properties where things are growing wild and clearly no one is actually paying attention. That's an obvious fine. I don't think anybody's going to doubt that. I don't care if you've got hostas or any other native plant growing out the wazoo. If it's not being maintained or managed, I think that would obviously be a violation. And so, I think that's the crux, and if we can make sure that there's no uncertainty in however this law hopefully eventually passes, I would be eager to work with you on that endeavor.
Another question, I, it just came to my mind. How would this, or would this affect businesses like True Green and people that, you know, work to take care of other people's lawns because they can't take care of them? And a lot of it is because they don't know, you know, the different kinds of plants or grass or so on, and they really don't want to know because of, you know, their schedules or so on. How is that going to phase into this, or will it?
I think today, we tend to think about this as high grass and weeds, and we have like a very blunt approach in the law. Is the grass high, above eight inches? Are there weeds? And so, it tends, I think, right now, to focus on the managed component of it. Certainly, the height is an indicator of whether or not that landscape is managed. I think what we're trying to be here is a little bit more nuanced, noting that some yards are very well-managed, very well-managed, and are well above eight inches and look great doing so. And we want to encourage folks to do that, because I think it does add character to our neighborhoods, and also a sense of pride in the native plants that we have here, and the species that then thrive off of those plants. So, I would suggest, and I'll tell you this, because of course, before I came on the council, I worked in the tree planting space. When we're thinking about trees to plant, there's a couple of things we do. First, we look at that native plant list. Even more specifically, we look at the list that the city provides for recommended trees, especially within the right-of-way. That's not, I know we operated that when I ran the organization, and I'm sure they still do that today. And many other nonprofits did the same. I would suggest, it's very likely that many landscapers do the same when they're thinking about what plants would likely do well in Baltimore, because while you can buy some exotic plant, if it doesn't fit this sort of climate area, whether or not it's native or not, it's not going to do well. So, they always tend to think that way. So, contractors should start there if they're looking to plant, is my suggestion.
Something else, it just, this might be a good time for the city to also think of some good incentive that can get people interested in, you know, taking the course or, you know, some phase of this whole process is a good idea. You wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that we are excited to continue the conversation. You know, besides just the height considerations, there are other considerations around sometimes areas that are overgrown, encourage illegal dumping, sometimes areas that have higher grass and weeds are kind of in violation of our SEPTED principles that we're working towards. So, it should definitely be a multi-agency conversation. We look forward to hearing, listening in on the hearing tomorrow and continuing to work with you.
Yeah. And if I could respond, Madam Chair, I think in those instances, we'll find every single time that anyone who would walk upon that property would agree that it's not a managed landscape, or that has not been maintained. So, I think where the work gets tricky, I think for an inspector, is where it is maintained, but still technically breaks the rules. And so, I think that's the nuance that maybe you're trying to hint at, for which I think we can think about how to handle that. But if it's not managed or maintained, like a vacant lot, or an overgrown, like, it may be a ton of native plants, but if it is overgrown, it's not managed, and they should be fined. So, I think that's the piece.
I'd also like to see Forest Street kind of play a role in this, working on this bill as well, because I'm sure they, really, they are probably the experts in the kinds of plants because of the things that they do. And also, there might be some contacts at the Silburn Arboretum, which also has classroom space for learning as we move forward on this bill as well. Any other comments or questions from the committee? Any further comments from the agencies? Councilman Dorsey?
Yeah, I just really want to, it's unclear to me how one discerns managed versus unmanaged. That's, if we're going to write a bill, and it's going to be in black and white, and somebody's got to interpret and uphold that code, I got to be able to understand the difference between managed and unmanaged. And it's clear that this four-inch and eight-inch stuff is like goofy. It doesn't, it doesn't really work. It doesn't work for the purpose of this bill, and it doesn't really work. It doesn't work for the purpose of this bill and it doesn't really work in practice. I mean, even, you know, there's a lot of reporting, research that says like, "Look, if you don't, if you only cut your lawn three times a year, like, it actually does one, even if you're talking about fescue grasses and bluegrass, it does wonders for ecology if you only cut it three times a year." But if you only cut it three times a year, you know, like, at some point you're going to have like 11-inch tall grass or 13-inch tall grass and it's not going to hurt anybody when it's there for like a week or two weeks before it comes cyclically to your like a couple of times a year. But the code now doesn't allow that and it's silly and it's not going to hurt anybody. But it's, but it's a number and this relies on numbers or some way of drawing a line in the sand between managed and unmanaged. If we're going to have a bill that's about being able to determine that, you know, again, set aside the whole question of native versus non-native, different plants, different species. To me, the heart of like, can we reasonably expect somebody to interpret this is like whether they can draw a line there? I'd like to know more precisely how we're thinking about that going forward. Thanks.
I think that's, you're mentioning a good point because we do have areas when the grass or any weed or plant grows a certain height, it attracts rats and rodents and other things that are harmful in certain neighborhoods. So we have to keep that in mind as well. Councilmember Conway.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate the councilman's thought here. I think it is a great starting point to sort of trigger HCD intervening and maybe issuing a citation. I do think there is a lot to be gained by promoting or supporting efforts that further ecosystem benefits. If you want to see an oriole, this is how we get there. And that's crazy, you haven't seen an oriole. It's crazy. But I do think that the native plants piece is, it is very important. And I think those that know, I work in the conservation space and I think about this stuff probably more than I should. But understanding how these systems play together is really, really, really important. So I think that the managed natural landscape, I think is a, I think a pretty, a pretty good cutoff for HCD to say, "Look, this looks unkempt." The definition that we have here is that a managed natural landscape means planned, intentional, and maintained planting of native or non-native grasses. So we could theoretically separate native and non-native from the managed and have those two criteria for which this bill may or may not trigger. We can separate those pieces out, defining native plant and separating that from managed natural landscape so that we can have those be separate things. I do think though, I think it is important for the bill and certainly important for long-term ecology of the city as we think about really, honestly, certain parts of the city that don't have much green space and don't have certainly much public green space. The look, the feel, the heat and otherwise that can be avoided by folks planting in their, their front yards and otherwise, it could be pretty meaningful if folks did plant more native plants. So I think they are different things, I agree with you. That managed natural landscape, I think, is maybe the point where we can probably get the most work out of tweaking this bill to be more effective and hopefully addressing the Health Department and HCD's concerns about management, given the change. But I don't want to miss the, I don't want to, you know, lose the forest for the trees here. I do think that native plants are part of the point here and it's what I'm seeing, especially in my district, folks that are planting native plants and being fined for it, that's not what we want to see. I don't think that's the heart of what we're trying to attend by having that eight-inch
Councilmember Dorsey?
Thank you. Yeah, because when I think about like managed, I mean, like, one thing that comes to mind that you see all the time that is actually, I think, a real problem is like a non-native invasive plant like English ivy taking over trees. Like, that's, like, that's very identifiable actually, is to have like that as a specific plant that I can identify that is taking over a tree. Like, it's also hard because like, it happens pervasively throughout our public parks and is really detrimental to our forests and it's taking a toll on our forested land. But, and so it makes it harder for us to say like, "You can't let this happen on your own private property just the same way we let it happen on parkland," but it's clearly an unmanaged and non-native thing. It puts us in a bind though, that it's something that's pervasive.
That's excellent, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Conway?
The English ivy one is a big, big problem across the city and I'm curious from HCD's perspective, how do we currently manage that? Technically, it doesn't grow, does it grow above eight inches? Do we fine when we see English ivy growing wild on someone's property?
We will cite a property owner if there's ivy growing on their property. I just wanted to add that, you know, the noxious weeds are a part of our city health code, so it is a joint responsibility of not just interpreting if it's native, if it's invasive, or if it's noxious. It's a pretty complicated issue, but we will currently cite for weeds and vines growing along fences and trees and homes.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful to know because when I think about the eight-inch, I think of eight inches off the ground, but if you've got essentially complete ground cover of an invasive vine, that's worse than the eight inches that it might grow up a tree. And so, you know, I don't think the law as it's currently written actually serves what I think we're intending to do. And we might even fine in a technical instance like that. I'm not sure if that technically by the exact word of the law would satisfy unless it grows up a tree, the eight-inch requirement, but we still would fine for that and we very reasonably should. So the managed, I think, natural landscape piece does give us some more ability to look at things beyond height of grass or any plants in a way that might cover things like invasive vines that can essentially cover the entire ground. So it's a very interesting thought. Thank you, Councilman, for bringing that up.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this bill opened up a continued conversation and we're going, you'd like some final words? Oh, there's, oh, is there any in-person testimony on this bill? And seeing none, are there any online? And there's none online. So at this point, we're going to go into recess with this bill for more information and dialogue at a later date. So we are now in recess.